Well, good morning, everyone. This is always a great morning we have to recognize people. And we are here today for our Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners Quarterly Awards and Recognition Ceremony. And to start, we're going to have our pledge and invocation from our Chaplain Commissioner, Stacy White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Heavenly Father, we're so thankful that we're able to gather here this morning to spread important messages through the proclamations that we deliver this morning and to recognize the outstanding and hard-working staff members that will be recognized this morning for various achievements. Lord, we are so thankful for the brave men and women that work as first responders, particularly for this county, so we're thankful that we're able to recognize many of them this morning. We pray that you will continue to guide them in their good work and to bless them each and every day, and we ask for these blessings in your heavenly name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner White. And I need to read a memo into the record. I will be unable to attend the awards ceremony on October 11th due to a conflict with the agency on Bay management. Please read this memo into the record from Commissioner Al Higginbotham. And good morning again. I want to thank you all for being here today as we hold our Quarterly Awards and Recognition Ceremony. During this gathering, we express our appreciation for the residents, the employees who work really hard, and all the accomplishments that helped make Hillsborough County a great place to live, work, and play. Commissioner Kemp, you're going to start it off. She'll give our first two recognitions.
Great to see all the award winners in here this morning with the fine work that you do for our community. Thank you for being here today. The Firefighter of the Year Award recognizes the heroism, the outstanding accomplishments, and the commitment to fire service by a fire rescue employee. And I'd like to welcome to the podium Fire Rescue Captain William Cobb, Chief Dennis Jones, Fire Marshal Tammy Zurla, and representatives from the Fire Rescue, if you would please come forward. We all must be thinking about our first responders here this morning when what the Hurricane Michael and the Panhandle, I can just imagine the kinds of work that is going on there today or for the next several months. Captain Cobb and his crew responded to a highly dangerous emergency in Riverview on March 19th. At least two people had been shot, their home had been set on fire, and the shooter was still at large in the area. A 22-year veteran of the Hillsborough County Fire Rescue, Captain Cobb acted decisively. He instructed his driver, engineer, to help with patient care. Captain Cobb also ensured that a child was rescued and the fire quickly extinguished and the house saved. He protected the lives of residents and his crew with his quick actions. It's my privilege to present Captain Cobb the Firefighter of the Year Award. Additionally, his name will be added to the plaque that will be placed in the trophy outside the boardroom. So here is the, I have to see all my notes here. Here we are. This is the Firefighter of the Year Award plaque, and here is the Firefighter of the Year Award. I hope I have all this right, medal. And this is the amazing plaque, I guess, that you will have your name entered onto. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to say a word here?
I'd just like to say thank you very much. I appreciate it. We work hard all year round for all this, so thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And I think we can, let's see, I guess we'll stay here for the second recognition. Chief Jones and Fire Marshal Zurla, could you, you're still here. So the lifesaver, I guess we have to have, I guess we should take a picture now?
Yes.
And then do, I didn't know if we wanted everybody to stay for the next one, or, okay, so let's take a picture now. And maybe you'd like to get in the frame here?
Yeah. Get between you pretty, tell me.
Okay. If Chief Jones and Fire Marshal Zurla could stay here for the next recognition, we will be honoring, giving the lifesaver of the quarter award recognizes a paramedic who has demonstrated exceptional skill in the performance of his or her emergency medical duties, efforts that give patients the best chance for recovery. I'd like to ask Fire Rescue Training Officer Robin Heron and the representatives from Fire Rescue to please join me at the podium here. Is this your family, if you'd like? We have to have her up here. Training Officer Robert Heron performed hundreds of hours of research to create a cardiac emergencies in-service training program. Thanks to Officer Heron's dedication, paramedics receive cutting-edge training for the treatment of myocardial infarction and out-of-hospital cardiac arrest. These efforts save lives, many lives, I'm sure. I'm proud to recognize Fire Rescue Training Officer Robert Heron as the lifesaver of And here is your plaque, lifesaver of the quarter plaque, and here is the lifesaver of the quarter medal.
Thank you.
Sounds like she's saying a few words.
Yeah.
Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Just thank you, County Commission, Chief Jones, and the administrative staff, my fellow training officers, and all those in the field who put education into action, because without it, I wouldn't be up here, so thank you.
Thank you so much. And we'll try to get a picture back here. And we'd ask that Chief Jones and Fire Marshal Zurla could please stay for the next recognition. Commissioner Merman will present our next recognition.
Well, this is always an honor to present this award, not just because we do it every year, but because it means so much. I know one of the things that I fought really hard for was to get smoke detectors out into the community and how our Fire Rescue has really worked hard to make sure that we could get as many out there as possible to help prevent fires. And that's why I think having a proclamation for Fire Prevention Month is so important. They, wrong page. Hillsborough Fire Rescue does an outstanding job responding to emergencies and other calls to service, but the department also excels in teaching people ways to protect themselves and their property, just like with the smoke detectors. This proclamation, which I will read into the record, is for Fire Prevention Month in Hillsborough County. It addresses a serious issue, which is home fires, stresses how critical it is for families to have an escape plan that includes a designated safe meeting place outside. And I'd like to read the proclamation that I'm going to present to Chief Jones. It says, "Whereas fire is a serious threat to public safety and people are at the greatest risk in their homes, whereas Hillsborough County first responders are dedicated to reducing the number of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. Whereas nationally, home fires killed more than 2,735 people in 2016, and fire departments responded to 352,000 home fires, causing $5.7 billion in direct damage." And that's according to the National Fire Protection Association. Whereas within unincorporated Hillsborough County, home fires killed two people in 2017, and Hillsborough County Fire Rescue responded to more than 628 home fires, causing $14 million in direct damage. Residents who have developed and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and more likely to survive a fire, whereas a home fire escape plan includes two exits from every room, a path outside from each exit, smoke alarms in all required locations, and designated safe meeting place outside. Whereas residents should identify places in the home where fires can start and eliminate those hazards. And if a smoke alarm sounds, immediately evacuate to the designated meeting place. And whereas the 2018 Fire Prevention Month theme, "Look, Listen, Learn, Be Aware: Fire Can Happen Anywhere," stresses how a home fire escape plan can provide essential information to quickly and safely escape a home fire. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby declare October 2018 as Fire Prevention Month, and Hillsborough County urges all residents to develop a home fire escape plan, practice it twice a year, and support Hillsborough County Fire Rescue in its efforts to increase public safety. Of course, signed by all seven county commissioners. And Chief Jones, you'd like to come forward and if you say a few words.
Yes. Thank you. Fire prevention is certainly very important. We would much rather prevent the fire than respond to it, and thank you for the proclamation. It is a very important part of what Hillsborough County Fire Rescue does. And I would also like to comment on Captain Cobb and his crew. We have over 1,200 employees in Hillsborough County Fire Rescue and over 1,000 on the front line, and they are doing an amazing job every day. And Captain Cobb and his crew certainly indicate the type of service that we provide. And for Captain, for Training Officer Heron, he's taken the choice, made the choice to come away from field operations and come into the office and provide a level of training that really revolutionizes the way we treat cardiac care in the street, and immediately began to see positive results from that. He sacrificed the regular schedule of a firefighter because he knew that his training education experience would make a life-changing difference for so many citizens of the county and improve our service for years to come. And I want to commend both the crew of Captain Cobb and Robert Heron for their work, and again, thank you for this proclamation.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you. And I do want to just express our appreciation on behalf of the board for every single member of Hillsborough County Fire Rescue. I know we recognize certain individuals, and we do this, but these guys have their life on the line, and they are on the front line every single day to help our residents. Yeah, because it's gotten, the ambassadors have been... These next two recognitions honor two dedicated employees who are working together to address affordable housing needs, excuse me, homelessness in Hillsborough County. And I'd like to invite Cheryl Howell, she's our Director of Affordable Housing Services, and Felicia Crosby-Rucker, she is the Director of Homeless Services for Hillsborough County, to please join me up here at the podium. Ms. Howell and Ms. Crosby-Rucker were recently honored by the Florida Community Development Association. It's a statewide organization that helps local governments achieve high-quality, locally-responsive programs to make communities better places to work and live. Ms. Howell is this year's recipient of the James E. Huger Distinguished Service Award. Since joining us in January 2017, Ms. Howell has been instrumental in the development of hundreds of affordable housing units and plans for many more are well underway. Right?
Yes, ma'am.
If y'all don't know, affordable housing is a huge issue on the county commission right now, so I know all of us, all of the county commissioners have been working very hard on making sure we have more affordable housing. But Cheryl Howell, she's worked tirelessly with nonprofits and other partners to build these units. And at the same event, Ms. Crosby-Rucker was honored with the Michael D. Smith Distinguished Service Award, and we just call her Felicia. Her efforts to increase the number of crisis beds in the community have contributed to a nearly 50% decrease in street homelessness. That's amazing, since 2014. And further, Felicia plays a major role in aiding homeless military veterans. So I want to say congratulations to both of you on these awards. Ms. Howell, I'll give you your award first. It's a beautiful award, and invite you to say a few words, and then I'll give Felicia her.
First and foremost, I'd like to thank the Board of County Commissioners, the county administrator, and of course, Ms. Moneywise, for their continued support in providing for affordable housing in Hillsborough County. But I want to say that I'm not an army of one, and I have some of the staff in here this morning, but they are the true force behind what we do, and I cannot, I cannot do it without them and without good partners that I see out in the audience today and all of the people who have embraced me since I have been here. I want to thank you for making me feel like I'm a part of the family. Thank you so much.
And Felicia Crosby-Rucker, this is another beautiful award that's been given to her, the Michael D. Smith Distinguished Service Award, and I'd like to present that to you and ask you also to say a few words.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. First, I want to thank the Board of County Commissioners for their support. I want to thank county leadership and also my boss, Carl Harness, Chief Human Services Administrator. I cannot do this alone as well. I've worked with great partners internally here at the county, as well as externally nonprofit agencies in the community. But also too, I have my purple crew here with me, the ladies in purple, my awesome team of ladies, stand up real quick, ladies. My awesome team. I could not do the things that I do without them, without them. I challenge them every day to be a part of the solution and think outside the box, and I'll be remiss if not saying anything other than I have an awesome support team outside of work too. My husband is here today too, surprised me, didn't tell me he was coming, but thank you from our family and everybody.
And we'll take a picture. And I just want to let everybody know, because I can't, our commission added $5.1 million in the budget this year for affordable housing and a lot of extra money for homeless services, so we are doing our part.
Each of the commissioners get the distinct pleasure to serve on a variety of different boards and councils and authorities. The one that I've had the pleasure of serving on for the last eight years is the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council. I'm a past chair of the council, and I mention this because this award is actually recognizing a specific entity as part of the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council awards. Each year, the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council gives up the region award for the economy and energy to economic development. And this year, we're very pleased to report that Hillsborough County and our department gets recognized. This isn't an easy award to achieve. We have to compete with all of the other counties within the seven-county, eight-county region, and there's some strong contenders out there, let me assure you. This award celebrates the successes of Entrepreneur Collaboration Center, which is supported by Hillsborough County and more than 50 businesses in our community. These are our partners. Will Lynn, if I mispronounce your name, please forgive me, Crozen and Carol Minor, please join me at the podium. Lynn, did I pronounce your name correctly? Close enough? Since 2014, the Entrepreneur Collaboration Center has excelled in attaining and helping entrepreneurs throughout Hillsborough County find the needed services and programs to help them grow and be successful. It could be visioning, it could be specialty training, it could be a variety of different things that entrepreneurs need to be successful. The center's accomplishments are many, such as hosting more than 900 programs. Wow. That's a lot. I've done a lot of programs myself, and 900 of them is a lot. For its efforts, the Entrepreneur Collaboration Center has been the recipient of the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council's Future of the Region Award for Economy and Energy Collaboration. Would you like to say a few words? Absolutely.
Thank you, Commissioner Chris, and the entire B.O.C.C. for continuing to recognize us and all the efforts that we achieve. Special thank you to the entire ECC team, the executive leadership team, our director Lindsey Kimball, and all of our partners who helped us achieve this award. Thank you.
You're very welcome. This is a really cool award. Look at this. Isn't that nice?
Thank you.
Picture?
I'm thrilled to present this award to Parks and Recreation's Paralympic Sport Tampa Bay, which is a year-round sports and recreation program that promotes physical activity, healthy lifestyles, and recreation and competitive sports opportunities for children and adults with physical disabilities. I'd like to call Andy Chassonoff from Parks and Recreation to please join me at the podium. And you're bringing up the team.
Representatives of the team.
This team is a true inspiration to residents with special needs. This past July, Paralympic Sport Tampa Bay competed at the National Junior Disability Championships. Our athletes participated in track, field, and swimming events and won 52 individual medals, including 39 gold and 13 silver. These achievements led Paralympic Sport Tampa Bay to finish second in the medium team division, so congratulations on that. And would you like to say a few words? This is the, I'll present you this way, with this award and ask you to say a few words here.
Well, thank you so very much. I would like to thank the Board of County Commissioners for recognizing our achievements this year and for your continued support and interest in our athletes and our program. I'd like to introduce a couple of the athletes up here. He'll hide behind the podiums. Move up.
We can lie really down.
He's okay. Come right over here. That's JT. JT went to his first Nationals this year. He's eight years old, third grade, and and set many of our new national record standards in track and field. Elizabeth Tidy, she's a freshman at Eckerd College. She also was in the first time set. She set national records in field events and was instrumental in our swim team, doing really well. Also Coach Caleb Solisi. My supervisor, who I appreciate very much for his continued support, Billy Graham. And our Director of Recreation, who has totally supported us in our endeavors, Rick Valdez. Thank you all very much for this recognition on behalf of the entire Paralympic Sport program.
Okay, Commissioner White will do our next recognition. Okay, Commissioner White will do our next recognition.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Our next recognition will go to the staff at the Lithia Water Treatment Plant, Hillsborough County's largest water treatment facility. At this time, I would like to invite Public Utilities Director George Cassidy and Section Manager Mark Lehigh to the podium. Bring the whole team. Happy to have you.
Good to be here.
Yes, sir. Every day, the Lithia Plant distributes an average of 30 million gallons of water to more than 390,000 residents in the south and central portions of the county. Since 2015, the plant has undergone multiple significant renovations to keep up with demand and maintain its commitment to provide high-quality drinking water and wastewater treatment services. For their efforts, the staff at the Lithia Water Treatment Plant received the 2017 Plant Operations Excellence Award from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. I would like to congratulate the entire team on a job well done. And if any of you would like to say a few words, we'd love to have you do that.
All right. I'd just like to say thank you to the board for recognizing us and allowing us to come up here and receive this award. Specifically, I'd like to thank my boss Beth Shinella and the best director I ever worked for, George Cassidy, not just because he's here, but why not? The support and the trust and what they give us to be able to do our job is phenomenal. And they allow us to protect the water quality, deliver the water, and all the operators at the facility are very familiar with George and his support. And we really appreciate that, and we couldn't do our jobs without that support. So thank you very much.
Well, once again, well done. You guys are out in my district. I appreciate everything you do. We'll do this photograph at this time, but then I'm going to ask that each of you remain at the podium for the next presentation.
2017 was an excellent year for public utilities. Our next recognition honors the department for its efficient and effective distribution of services and quality of customer support. For those of us that sit up here on the adias as commissioners, that customer support is critical, because if you're not doing it, we're getting it. And sometimes, we're not always getting it in a good way. The Public Utilities Division Director, Richard Cummings, you're already up here, but if you're not, if you could please join us. Senior Engineer, Jason Perillo. And Bill Young, Section Chair of the American Water Works Association, Florida Section, please join us. Bring the team up. I always like it when the teams come up, because we never get to see the real people behind the scenes that get the work done. And it's so important to see who's doing what and how important these people are until we get a chance to address them today. But I just want to look and see all these people that make it work well for us. The Public Utilities has been diligent in its professionalism, safety procedures, safety protocols, emergency preparedness, and maintaining the county's water quality and distribution services. Every year, the Florida Section of the American Water Works Association Committee selects a maximum of six recipients out of 547 potential recipients throughout Florida. The Outstanding Water Distribution System Award that we have here today, I am pleased to announce that Hillsborough County's Public Utilities is named winner of the 2017 Outstanding Water Distribution System Award for Division Eight. Congratulations. Please join me in recognizing this great team and all of those who work with you. You know, we turn that tap on and we see the water that comes out of it, but we don't always know what it has to go through to get to our homes. And it's a whole vast system. And the people that have to run that system and ensure that that quality stays consistent and that all of us have a good, healthy drink when we need it. And again, let's thank them for helping to keep our lives healthy. And this plaque looks like water. Who's our recipient of the plaque? Rich? All right. Let's get a picture. Why don't you get in the middle, Rich? I get to do another one. This one, all of them are in enjoyment, but this one's very special to me. I mean, all of you see that I sit up here on the adias and I serve as a commissioner, but what you don't see is that I have run an advertising and communications company for 36 years. And that's how I've earned my living in the advertising, PR, and communications industry. So there's a very special place in my heart. We have an incredibly well-run, very creative team of communications people here at Hillsborough County. I was impressed coming in the door and seeing the kind of talent that we truly have here in this building. And, you know, there are people that are all around us, especially when you're in this room, and you don't see them. There are shadows. There's cameras on the walls. There are electronic eyes watching and panning the room, you know? And very rarely do we ever get a chance to recognize them and the good work that they do. But today, we're going to bring them out of the shadows and highlight their outstanding accomplishment. The next recognition goes to the Communications and Digital Media Department, whose dedicated staff plays a significant role in helping the residents and, of course, the county and our visitors prepare, stay safe, and be informed during the Hurricane Irma, which happened last September. Would the Director, Annette Spina, and communications team that's with you today, please join me up here? For all of you who's watching through the digital electronic eyes, we know you're there. You're with us in spirit. Wow, so many faces that we don't get a chance to see. Now we're seeing you. I see that. I'm just taking a good gander, because I'm just so proud of all of you and grateful. As the fourth-largest county in Florida, Hillsborough County knows the value of year-round preparation and quality communication during our emergencies. Lord knows, we get our share here in the Tampa Bay area. Throughout Hurricane Irma, the communications staff gathered and sent out vital, real-time information. They used traditional and non-traditional channels of communication to connect with residents, visitors, and businesses with critical resources and services. The department used six social media outlets and an impressive, mobile-friendly website. Their communication plan also included live televised briefings and natural broadcast platforms. They did frequent print and digital media announcements and emergency alerts via phone calls, text messages, and other sources. This enabled the public to take action, keep their families informed, and be safe. For its achievements during the challenging time, Communications and Digital Media was the recipient of the PR Daily's Crisis Communication Recipient Management Award. That is a very difficult award to get. And, I mean, this is very special. Annette, thank you so much for your talents, your commitment, your leadership, and for your staff that makes us all look so very, very good here at Hillsborough County. May you continue to get the message out that we do wonderful things and that we are a wonderful county. We have the highest bond rating in the state at a quadruple A. That means we manage our money well. We have the fastest-growing economy in the state. That means we've done a good job of increasing jobs and business economics. And we've made it through some tough times like the hurricane because of the great communication efforts of our team standing here behind us. Please join me in recognizing and thanking them. Like to say a few words.
Oh, but I'll be brief. Actually, thank you, Commissioner Chris. What is really special about this particular award is it truly touches every person in the department. When we're activated, we're all in. We're an essential department. So it's really special that it's everybody. And I still see some folks over there that haven't come over. We've all been there. But what made it more special in the way we were able to accomplish this is because there was a bigger team at work, and that was the team that was activated with us. Everyone that was in the EOC and out in the community getting us the information and quickly, so we could get it out there, from sandbag tracking to shelter openings and closings and movings. And we just really appreciate what a big team effort happened and allowed us to accomplish this mission. And I do say, best team building exercise ever, Mr. Merrill. Thank you for your leadership, and thank you, commissioners.
All right, get our picture taken.
Okay, Commissioner White will do our next recognition.
Well, this next recognition touches on something that arguably the most citizens are interested in, and that's the money. How are we spending our hard-earned money? Certainly, we have staff in the Budget and Finance Department that does a wonderful job. Hillsborough County's budget process is exceptionally detailed. The budget document must be presented so that the public has a full understanding of how money is being allocated. It's a total team effort, and our team is most definitely the best. So at this time, I would like to ask Tom Fessler, Director of Management and Budget, to please join me at the podium. Tom, it's always good to see you. Once again, Hillsborough County is the recipient of the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award from the Government Finance Officers Association. The award means that Hillsborough County's budget meets the highest principles of governmental budgeting as a policy document, financial plan, operations guide, and a communications device. Hillsborough County truly is a pioneer in efforts to improve the quality of budgeting and sets an excellent example for other governments throughout North America. Mr. Fessler, congratulations. Love to have you say a few words.
Sure. I just wanted to thank the commissioners for all your support during the budget process. It is something that takes the majority of the year for us to get to an adopted budget in September. Also, I want to thank Mike Merrill, the county administrator, Bonnie Wise, Chief Financial Administrator, and the departments for their participation. Also, special recognition of the Communications Department, who has allowed us to take our budget document from kind of an old outdated look to the new look that we have today that allows us to continue to get the award. And then finally, I wanted to recognize also the work of, the hard work of my staff up in the budget office. Without them, we would never get to the point where we have an adopted budget. So thank you.
Okay, and our next presentations will be presented by Commissioner Kemp.
I'm thrilled to present these next three awards to Pet Resources, which has done a phenomenal job in finding homes for more than 70,000, 70,000 dogs and cats since 2013. I'd like to call Director Scott Trebatowski to please come join me at the podium. And any staff members who you have with you to please come up. Thank you for bringing such a big team. You all have some of the hardest work in Hillsborough County, I think. I'd also just like to take a minute to recognize and call up Wendy DePaul. And I understand her husband is here? Being shy in the back, but. And she's the current Chair of the Animal Advisory Committee, my appointee to the committee. And I just want to thank you, because you've volunteered, like so many people on the Animal Advisory Committee, so much volunteer time. And that's what I think makes our whole Pet Resources work. And so I'd really like to thank you for keeping me well-informed and being so dedicated to making that work. It's been a team effort among staff and volunteers, and I'm glad to recognize you all. As the only open-admission shelter in Hillsborough County, the Pet Resource Center maintained a live outcome rate, this is amazing, of 92% for dogs and cats, and 85%, I'm sorry, for cats. In addition, it hosted a statewide pet emergency exercise In addition, it hosted a statewide pet emergency exercise and operated nearly a dozen pet-friendly shelters during Hurricane Irma. For these accomplishments, the Florida Animal Control Association named Pet Resources as the 2017 Outstanding Agency of the Year. Congratulations. This is, this is a number of awards here, and I have to say, I was an aide to Commissioner Castor back in 2004, and 2004, 2005, 2006. And I happen to be in the time when, during two months, we had four hurricanes. I think anyone who was here remembers that well, I can tell you, as an aide in an office here. It was very, very memorable, each and every one. But one of the things that was a, a big issue was that we couldn't get people. So many people were not interested in going to shelters because they couldn't take their pets with them. And it was a huge, huge issue at the time. And I think for me, my allergies seem to be coming on here in opportunity, but the, I think for me, one of the biggest changes, honestly, as a new commissioner here now, is I was surprised during Hurricane Irma how open we were and how open the shelters were and available to pets throughout Hillsborough County. So I think it was a sea change in what we did here, and I was, I was very amazed to see the difference. I had no idea. So the second award comes from Points of Light, the world's largest independent nonprofit organization that encourages the spirit of service and volunteerism. Pet Resources took part in a rigorous 18-month program to earn the nonprofit organization's Service Enterprise Certification. It became one of two dozen shelters nationwide to earn the Service Enterprise Certification, and the only, only government-operated open-admission shelter in Florida to receive, receive this distinction. It's a well-deserved, congratulations. So here is that. You seem to just be racking them up here. Finally, the last award recognizes Pet Resources' efforts before, during, and after Hurricane Irma. As a storm approached, Mr. Trebatowski sought partnerships with government and non-government animal welfare organizations across the country to seek help in transporting and caring for shelter pets. This action proved to be a success as numerous shelters in the Northeast and Midwest agreed to accept pets from the center. For its hard work during challenging circumstances, Pet Resources was presented with the National Association of Counties Achievement Award in the Risk and Emergency Management category, recognizing the center's program managing pet shelter population during a community emergency. Scott, thank you for all that you've done, and all of you, thank you for all that you've done, you continue to do for this county's animal populations. And would you like to say a few words?
Five years ago, the Board of County Commissioners and County Administration paved the way for a new focus on the abused homeless and, and unwanted pets in this community. That truly was a sea change for this community, and you're seeing those changes across the country. The support we get from the commission, the county administrator, Mike Merrill, Assistant County Administrator, Greg Horwiddell, and Greg, Dexter Varge, my boss, is remarkable. But the people who are often forget, and we rarely are able to drag down here, are representatives of the hundred paid team members that work long days every day of the year, regardless of if we're a holiday or not a holiday, whether there's a storm or not a storm. We've got to take care of the animals. They come in very early in the morning and often stay late into the hours of the evening. We also have several hundred unpaid team members that we like to call volunteers that make it very impossible that 70,000 animals over the last five years have found new homes. Without these people that work in the trenches every day, we wouldn't be able to accomplish what we accomplish every day. I also want to send out a special thank you to Rosalyn Coy, who was here in spirit, but she couldn't make it, and she's, she's representative of what we do each and every day in our shelter operations and caring for our animals.
I just want to say another thank you and let you know that the county and the community is very proud and appreciative of all your work. Thank you. I don't know whether it's apropos to admit it, but I think it's my allergies to dogs and cats that... It's the truth. Commissioner Miller will present our next two recognitions.
Seven years ago, the Florida Association for Water Quality Control created two leadership awards to recognize individuals across the state who have made significant contributions to the management of water, our water resources. This year, one of these prestigious awards went to one of our very own. You know, when Dr. Garrity retired from the EPC, there were some concerns who would come in and fill those shoes, because those were some big shoes to fill. We found the right person to do that, and it's carrying this organization to higher heights. So Janet Doherty, Executive Director of the Environment Protection Commission of Hillsborough County, and Sam Zamani, Eli RJ, hope I pronounced that right, and Jason Gory, and whoever else you want to bring up, please come forward. From the, and then Mr. Gory is from the Florida Association of Water Quality Control. Since taking the helm of the EPC a few years ago, Ms. Doherty has added the agency's impressive record of success protecting our water, our air, soil, and properties. And you all know our environment is vitally important to us, and there are changes every day. A prime example was Hurricane Michael. I've been around Florida for a long time. I was born and raised there, and you don't see hurricanes reach those type of miles per hour that they did when it hit the Gulf of Mexico. So things are changing, our environment is changing. She's grown the EPC into an exemplary workplace, one that keeps it getting better and more popular. Every year, for her efforts, Ms. Doherty recently was honored by a distinguished group of water quality professionals, and I'd like to read the combination recognizing her achievements. The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize Janet Doherty, Executive Director of the Environment Protection Commission of Hillsborough County, for receiving the prestigious Wade Hopping Leadership Award on the Florida Association of Water Quality Control. Ms. Doherty has served as Executive Director since 2015. EPC administers one of the largest running water quality monitoring networks in the country, and under her leadership, Ms. Doherty works diligently to ensure that the waters of Tampa Bay remain healthy, helping to refuel our economic engine that generates over 291,000 jobs in the region. In addition, the agency has received other notable recognitions, including the 2016 Florida Governor Sterling Award for Regional Award for Natural Environment, and has been named one of the top 100 workplaces by the Tampa Bay Times for the last two years. It is for this outstanding achievement and Ms. Doherty's unwavering commitment to environmental stewardship that the Florida Association of Water Quality Control, a highly respected organization of water quality professionals, honored her in June with its 2018 Wade Hopping Leadership Award. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby commission Ms. Janet Doherty for her leadership in overseeing water resource policies and personnel, and thanks her for managing, improving, and protecting the quality of Hillsborough County and Florida waters, executed this 11th day of October 2018. I'm glad to say that our Chair of the EPC was able to sign her contract to bring on board.
Thank you, Commissioner.
She's actually welcome. Congratulations.
First, I'd like to thank the Board for honoring me with this recognition, as well as the Administrator, and especially the Chairman of the EPC, Commissioner Miller. You have the EPC team behind me. You can't do anything and be a leader without great people behind you. I was surprised when I received the award because Rick Shont and HuShang Bustani drove to Naples and surprised me. Today, I was surprised because our past Air Director, Jerry Campbell, showed up as well to, to honor me. I did want to say one quick thing about Wade Hopping. He served on the Florida Supreme Court, and then he opened Hopping Green &amp; Sam Law Firm. And what he tried to do was to help industries navigate environmental regulations. But in the latter part of his life, he became a conservationist, and he understood the connection between the preservation of land and water quality, and he helped with the acquisition of Babcock Ranch, which was one of the largest land acquisitions in the state of Florida. You know, I'm truly honored. Unfortunately, Elliot Raj and Jason Gory were not able to be here today, but I would like to recognize Sam Zamani and let him come up and say a couple of words. The Florida Association for Water Quality is a wonderful organization. They have a conference in Naples every year with the most technical program, and I encourage all of you, it's the second week in June, to go there. I served on the Board decades ago. Sam has been on the Board for probably four decades, but I'd like him to come up, and thank you so much. Sam?
She aged me. My name is Sam Zamani. I'm one of the Directors of the Florida Association for Water Quality Control. I, just a little bit of background on the association, it's a non-for-profit organization that was established back in 1976, and the mission of the association is just to gather the latest water quality information and technology and disseminate that information to the, to its member. I had the pleasure of working with Janet for the last 20 years or so. She has contributed tremendously to the work of the association, and she has actually served as a President of the Association twice in the past. This year, the Board of Directors unanimously voted for, to award the 2018 Award to Janet, and thank you again for all your work, and congratulations. Thank you very much for all you do for the environmental protection.
Thank you, Sam, very much.
Thank you.
And before we take a picture, I'd like to just recognize Sam Elrobbie. He is our Water Director, and we have the longest water monitoring continuous program in the nation, and that has been for over 40 years. So thank you, Sam.
Since we all are here, we'll take a picture later, okay? The next award goes to the Environment Protection Commission. That's why I said, wait a minute. So anyone else from the Environment, that's involved with the EPC, please come forward. Environment Protection Commission, which continues to demonstrate that not only it's vital to prosperity of Hillsborough County, but the Tampa Bay region as well. I can tell you, other counties don't have a Environment Protection Commission like us, and they're always calling on us. So I'm not going to call any names that come up, because I think they're already here, okay? Created by the legislature in 1967, the EPC has a storied history. Its profound impacts have fell throughout Hillsborough County and beyond. Recently, the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council honored the EPC for this first-of-a-kind research that will strengthen the region's environmental protection efforts and further protect the natural resources that make Hillsborough County and the Tampa Bay area so special. I'd like to read the combination for the record. It's the Environment Protection Commission. The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize the Environment Protection Commission for its groundbreaking wetlands research and initiatives that garnered a distinguished recognition for its efforts as to safeguards sustainable ecosystems and water supplies in the Tampa Bay area. Utilizing a grant from the United States Environmental Protection Agency, the EPC performed the nation's first-of-a-kind study to evaluate the effectiveness of freshwater wetlands mitigation in collaboration with Dr. Aaron Brown of the University of South Florida and Dr. Kim Hogg of the United States Geological Survey. The study analyzes wide-ranging data from the 1950s to the present, utilizing geographic information systems mapping that match geographical spirals, relationships with actual field evaluations of permit freshwater wetland sites and their control structures to produce the study entailed improving compensatory mitigation in the Tampa Bay watershed. It sounds like a lot to me, I'll tell you. This research results in various findings and recommendations that could improve the effectiveness of the agency's freshwater wetlands mitigation program, and serves as a role model for other regulatory programs. The EPC Wetland Program notably has maintained the wetlands not, no not loss, no net loss, no net loss requirements with the Clean Air Act since its creation in 1985. The water, the work recently earned EPC the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council's Future of the Region Award for Natural Environment, demonstrating what a true asset the agency is for the region and state. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby commend the Environment Protection Commission for its cutting-edge work and wishes its continued success.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. I'm going to actually turn it over to some other people. Again, thank you, Commission, and thank you, County Administrator Mike Merrill, for this recognition. When I first started, the grant had gone on for several years. The EPA had given us several hundreds of thousands of dollars, but I asked Sterling Woodard, our new Air Director, to bring it in for a landing, and I want him to come up and, and say a few words and thank staff. Also wanted, we had many partners. We had Dr. Brown, this was his thesis. He is with the Southwest Florida Water Management District. We have Kim Hague here. Dr. Hague, she just retired from the U.S. Geological Service, so we had many partner scientific agencies. So Sterling, if you'll thank everybody, and Dr. Hague, if you would like to say something, just thank you so much for this commendation.
Thank you. On behalf of the commission, we appreciate you guys.
You can lift it up.
I'm used to leaning over. Thank you.
There you go, big guy.
All right. But on behalf of the Board, we appreciate the commendation that you gave to us, and also the entire staff of the EPC. Nothing that you do in life, you do it by yourself. You always ask out to have help. And in this particular case, what we did and what we accomplished was all of our different divisions working together to try to accomplish one goal, and that is to do the best and most excellent job that we could. And I'm so proud of our team, Mike Thompson and some of the other people who are not here, Bill Vorstadt, Heidi...
Leslie.
Heidi Leslie, and some of the other people who actually are not here, but I appreciate all of their efforts. I appreciate all of the work that we've done. And most of all, it actually takes leadership, and our Executive Director, she actually stepped up and put us all together and actually helped us to, to bring this in for a landing. So I just want to thank everyone for the accolades, and Dr. Hague, working with her. Aaron Brown is not here. I think his wife is, is sick, and he wasn't able to come here, but he was from USF, and he and Dr. Hague took different parts of this, this particular project and brought them together. And it was a pleasure being able to work with her, because as an airperson, I learned an awful lot about wetlands during that time period, okay? And I think I'll probably forget most of it after today. Thank you.
Good morning. As a member of the federal government, it was a real privilege to be able to work with members of the county and University of South Florida on a team. And that teamwork created a lot of positive synergy, and, and that led to the successful outcome of the project. And we greatly appreciate the recognition of the Board of County Commissioners for our work. Thank you.
Before we take a picture, I want to welcome Jerry Campbell back. Jerry recently retired, and I don't know what you're doing these days, but we want to thank you for all the work you did with the EPC for 35 years with the EPC. So thank you so very much, and thank you for coming back. Appreciate it. Good seeing you. Let's take a picture. Let's take a picture. Mr. Murman will make the last three presentations.
Thank you. And, boy, we've had some really great recognitions today, haven't we? It's been pretty awesome. Our next award is going to go to a person whose expertise in the construction and contracting industries has led her to be named Consultant of the Year for the second year in a row by the Florida Small Business Development Center, Jeanette Blanco. She is with the Economic Development Department, and she's joining me up here at the podium. Just like to read a little bit about you. Says, "As a Senior Business Consultant for the Florida Small Business Development Center at Hillsborough County, Ms. Blanco's knowledge and experience in business plans, construction industry, regulations, and licensing contract compliance are crucial for her customers. Her skills and knowledge enable her to work with clients to navigate contract bids, for which she has been successful in obtaining over $3 million in contract awards during the reporting year-end fiscal period and nearly $2 million in business capital." She was named the Florida Small Business Development Center's 2017 Regional Consultant of the Year for her accomplishments. And I just want to say, big congratulations. We all know business development is really important to us here at the county, creates more jobs, and we're just very proud of you. And here's your award. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you so much. Well, thank you so much. I would not do this without the support of, of course, the County Commissioners and my team. All the things that we do, we do it because that is our passion. I have the privilege to serve my community. In Hillsborough County, this is the... I mean, this is the best job I could have. Thank you for all my team in the economic development. Carl Minor is here. And also the team at the ECC, where we're located. We make things happen, and we really make dreams come true. Thank you so much.
Great. Here's your award. Take a picture. Thank you. Congratulations. And now I'd like to ask George Cassidy, our Public Utilities Director, to come forward. And we all know... John, you can come up with him if you'd like. Come on. The boss is boss. And boss. Public Utilities does an outstanding job providing drinking water and wastewater treatment services to unincorporated Hillsborough County. Our next presentation honors the department's accomplishments and raises awareness about water conservation. And this proclamation recognizes Water Quality Month in Hillsborough County. And it does address how important water is as our most precious resource. And it's my pleasure to present this proclamation, which I'll read into the record. And this really is important. It's not just Water Quality Month. Our citizens, you know, I sit on the Tampa Bay Water Board, and they tell us how important water quality is to them. So this is a very good proclamation. Says, "Whereas water quality is essential to life, human health, sanitation, urbanization, and sustainability. Whereas groundwater, lakes, rivers, and streams are significant resources upon which the United States relies for fresh water. Whereas Hillsborough County's water resources must be protected for the health and welfare of the community and its residents. Whereas rainwater, stormwater, reclaimed water, surface water, groundwater, and wastewater are all considered one water, providing economic and social benefits through recreation, manufacturing, business, tourism, agriculture, and other endeavors. The quality of all water resources should be managed in a sustainable, inclusive, and integrated way for the benefit of human health as well as for Hillsborough County's environment and future development. Whereas community awareness and education aid in water conservation, they create common goals among government, environmental groups, businesses, and residents to achieve environmental protection and preservation. Whereas Hillsborough County is committed to protecting its water resources and improving water quality in the region through the support and implementation of stormwater and advanced wastewater treatment projects such as the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Stormwater Program." That's a mouthful. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare August 2018... We did have award ceremony planned for August. That's why it says this here. Water Quality Month in Hillsborough County encourages all residents and businesses to celebrate water quality awareness, take action to protect water resources, and ensure a healthy and prosperous future for all. I'll present this to George. And would you like to say something?
Just real briefly, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the Board of County Commissioners for this proclamation and recognizing how important our water resources are. And even though this is for the month of August, I'd like to think that every month, every day, is Water Quality Month. And we should take extra efforts to certainly protect and appreciate the water resources that we have. And also, thank you to Mike and the executive team for their fabulous support. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's take a picture. Okay. And our last proclamation is for an amazing woman who was recognized by the Tampa Bay Times as a 2018 Business Leader Award in the Small Business category for her accomplishments at our very own Senior Connection Center with Charlotte McHenry. She's already here. She's joining me here at the podium. And what's truly remarkable about Charlotte is that the accolades recognizing her service to the county seem to grow every day. She was recently named 2018 Businesswoman of the Year Honoree by the Tampa Bay Business Journal. And she was accepted into the Leadership Tampa's 2019 class. These achievements are very inspirational. I'm pleased to present her this commendation, which I will now read into the record. Says, "The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize Charlotte McHenry for her work in improving the quality of life for seniors, leading her to be selected for the Tampa Bay Times 2018 Best Leader Award. As President and CEO of Senior Connection Service, Ms. McHenry, excuse me, is a firm believer that all employees should be involved in creating a healthy, productive work environment. She collaborated with her staff in identifying the organization's core values. Her teamwork philosophy led to the creation of the SCC, the Senior Connection Center's Emerging Leader Program, where she provided tailored training and mentoring to staff members interested in career advancement under her creative leadership. Senior Connection Center earned numerous accolades and include the National Association of Area Agencies on Aging, 2018 Aging Innovations Award, and the Tampa Bay Business Journal's 2016 Nonprofit of the Year. Ms. McHenry was also recognized as a public service exemplar by the Suncoast Chapter of the American Society for Public Administration. The Tampa Bay Times recognized the agency as one of Tampa Bay's top 100 workplaces for the third consecutive year, in addition to honoring Ms. McHenry with its Business Leader Award in the Small Business category. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby commend Charlotte McHenry for her extraordinary leadership at Senior Connection Center, congratulates her for winning the Tampa Bay Times 2018 Best Leader Award. And this is certainly deserving. We're proud of you as a leader, a business leader, a businesswoman in our community. Thank you. Really awesome. Please say a few words.
Good morning. I am very honored and humbled. Thank you, Commissioner Murman, as well as the other county commissioners. But again, like others have said before me today, you don't do this by yourself. And I want to recognize Katie Parkinson, who's in the front row taking pictures. She's my Chief Operating Officer and all the remaining staff that couldn't be here. And we work closely with Hillsborough County Government. And I know there's staff back there with the Department of Aging Services. Thank you so much because you give a voice to the voiceless, and that's what we try to do each and every day. We work with the Department of Aging Services here. They're our lead agency, as well as the Department of Social Services. So I thank them greatly for all their support to help older adults. Our mission at Senior Connection Center, I always say it's a powerful statement. It may be very simple, to help older adults and persons with disabilities live with independence and dignity. And that's what we strive for each and every day. And we put all of our heart into that. I just want to end by saying that just know that our agency, Senior Connection Center, as well as Hillsborough County, and we cover four other counties, Polk, Highlands, Hardy, and Manatee as well. But there are vulnerable seniors out there. There are seniors that are socially isolated, lonely, hungry. And that's what we do each and every day to strive to improve their quality of life.
Okay. I just want to say that concludes our award ceremony. I want to give a huge congratulations to all of our award recipients, and thank you all for being here today. And just thank you for the invaluable work that you do to make Hillsborough County just a great place to live, work, and play. And we're so proud of you, proud of our recipients. But every single worker in the county is deserving of some recognition for the work they do with our citizens every single day. So thank you all. Have a good day.